So, as promised, we have our pre-arranged questions. So, the first topic is land use and the set of questions under land use. Read, what is your vision for the future of county property in Santa Clara? Are you in favor of expanding the urban growth boundary? What is your position on logging timber and timber salvage? And please include how your position relates to the Lane County budget. So, why don't we start with you, Misty?
I believe our public lands need to be open to the public and used to fund our communities. We need to log our logging areas, preserve our farmland because farms feed us, have green spaces for us to use, parks, nature trails, stuff like that. Logging and timber salvage is an essential resource and revenue to our county. And we need to log it instead of letting it burn. There's millions of dollars of unclaimed, unused timber dollars that would greatly benefit our county, and I think we need to get that used here in our, you know, our communities. It would offset the taxes that are taken from us. That would help, you know, benefit us as a public.
You still have about a minute. Did you want to use more time?
Well, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ryan.
Yes, I support the River Road Santa Clara Land Use Plan. We need to focus on where we can expand the UGB. It has to make sense. The Urban Reserve doesn't take over any Class 1 or Class 2 soils or anything in the flood plains. These are all high-yield fields that can produce a lot of different crops, and we need to protect them. Our housing implementation pipeline is underestimating what we needed to be building. Lane County is looking at a housing shortage. It's estimated we will be sixteen thousand four hundred and three houses short in just five years. Lane County is hurting for new housing, and this is going to take multiple land use issues to help solve. UGBs are going to have to expand, and once again, it has to make sense. There are certain places this makes better sense than others. I don't want to see our farmland buried in housing developments, but this housing problem is a real concern, and it does need to be addressed.
Still have approximately a minute. Would you like to use it?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, so Dawn, please, and then Terry.
Thank you for the question. Many folks are concerned about the patchwork of county and city property in Santa Clara. The city's current policy of allowing county property to slowly move into the city as it subdivides is working well. It allows those on fixed incomes to maintain county property status without forcing annexation on anyone. But meanwhile, living in this patchwork, we do have challenges, especially with public safety. When I call 911 from my home, Eugene Police are dispatched, but when my neighbor calls the same number, Lane County Sheriff Deputy is called to respond. And so, in theory, this should be seamless, but we have seen the confusion and lack of collaboration between these agencies when we're faced with a hate or bias incident or when a nuisance property is in violation of a tangle of city and county ordinances that their neighbors have to navigate to get relief from rats or cats or drug dealing. When Saco wants to communicate with our members, for years, we have been, we have received funding for our newsletter to reach only city portion of our membership list, and we've been told we have to leave out our county members. In my vision for the area, the legacy county properties inside the urban growth boundary will remain that way until they subdivide, and then they will come into the city and help pay for and receive city services. And in the meantime, during the transition, if I am fortunate enough to be elected as your county commissioner, I will work to improve collaboration between the county and the city to serve the residents appropriately and with less confusion and delay in responding to concerns and residents' needs. Having participated in public comment regarding Eugene's Urban Reserves discussion, I am very aware there is a big red target painted on the land between Santa Clara and Junction City, and much of that land is Class 1 and Class 2 soils. Soils, they're not making any more land, and I will stand strong in favor of protecting prime agricultural land from development. That land is critical to our long-range ability to grow our own food to feed ourselves. Restoring our forest lands to good health, creating a sustainable timber harvest, and maximizing the many benefits afforded to us by our restored healthy forests is a vision I share with many, many folks throughout Lane County.
Thank you. Terry.
Yeah, I think my vision for the future of your county property in Santa Clara, it's important to utilize this in the best interest of your community. As far as expanding the urban growth boundary, it also, it depends upon what services you're desiring to gain by expanding the urban growth boundary. Is it more buildable lands? When this does become a question to the council, excuse me, to the commission, come after a vote by your residents. And I am there to support and advocate for whatever your residents desire they want to do. If they decide, decide they want to expand the urban growth boundary, we'll listen to the arguments and we'll see a fair vote. Position on logging and timber, timber salvage? I'm a logger. Timber harvest is a renewable resource. Salvage is a necessary evil. Timber salvage, just this last winter, has created many new jobs in the industry. As part of the Climate Action Plan is to create new jobs in the timber industry as dedicated by Lane County. So, I don't believe these relate to the budget, generally speaking, the logging, other than the fact that a healthy economy is gonna, gonna help the economy. A healthy economy is gonna help the budget. It's going to help the county. So, I guess that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hey, Kate, this is Ryan. I'm sorry, I forgot part of the question. That's why I had so much time. Okay, I was just.
Go ahead and use your last.
Yeah, it's like thirty seconds of that or so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I skipped timber salvage. We, we do need to harvest our timber, the timber grounds at a sustainable yield, focusing on never harvesting more than we are currently producing. We pulled out of the AOCC, the county did, this is a huge chunk of revenue we were missing out on. Our Lane County tax rate was based on getting timber receipts that we're no longer getting. We can see and feel it at the county level. ONC Timbergrounds are being harvested at less than a sustainable yield. We're actually harvesting around ten percent, leaving a ninety percent overgrowth every year. That's leading to an unhealthy forest. It's more susceptible to forest fires. The salvaged timber should be utilized to the best of its potential. We need to harvest the trees. The land is now clear, and it can be replanted. Growing trees sequester carbon. Decaying trees are emitting greenhouse gases. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay. So, the next question is a financial question. And the nexus of that is, what is your view of the current Lane County budget? How do you plan to change it? What would you do to stimulate middle-income jobs? And will you try to stabilize funding for neighborhood newsletters for Santa Clara County residents? So, why don't we go ahead and start with Dawn Leslie this time?
Thank you for the question. This year, Lane County administered an eight hundred and seventy-three million dollar budget. Before I served on the Lane County Budget Committee, I didn't realize that ninety percent of that budget was comprised of restricted funds, including the Health and Human Service and Road Funds. Only ten percent is the general fund, and that money has to fund public safety, county administration, and other key elements. I have been disappointed with the transparency of the budget process and have advocated for greater citizen involvement in the budget. If I'm elected commissioner, I will advocate for filling the county auditor position so we can more clearly demonstrate good financial performance and revamping citizen oversight of the budget process. Public safety is my greatest concern with regard to the county budget. It has been underfunded for quite a while as the secure rural schools funding was reduced ninety-four percent over the last twenty years. I was delighted to see the current board was able to recently fund twelve new deputy positions to expand sheriff's in rural areas to help fill gaps in coverage, and there is still a ways to go. I want to emphasize three ways to stimulate middle-income jobs locally. First will be to improve rural broadband internet service. Everyone trying to conduct business in Lane County, even farmers, need internet access, and it's not, just, just not universally available in the rural parts of Lane County, as Misty can attest and was talking about earlier. A second good jobs focus will be local agriculture. Growing and processing food and beverages is one of Lane County's strengths. In 2014, I convened a meeting of local food growers and producers to discuss barriers to growing their businesses. Workforce, housing, land, and access to capital were some of the barriers they described. If I am fortunate enough to win this seat, I'll look forward to continuing that conversation and finding ways to work together to remove those barriers. A third good job creator will be to bring a modular home manufacturing facility to Lane County. I'll be advocating for Junction City as the best site. Taking advantage of modern building technology, this innovative process produces modular homes quickly and affordably. If we manage to cite it here, it will be a boon both to job growth and relieving the housing shortage.
Thank you. Let's see. Misty, please.
The county's budget, I think, is in a mess. We absolutely need a complete audit of the system, have full transparency so that we know where our funds are going. The funds have been taken through taxes and other means, so let's figure out where they are, where they've been put, and put them back where they're supposed to be. Lane County has four thousand six hundred square miles, and we have three deputies, deputies on at any given time, and that's unacceptable out where I live. It's a twenty-nine-minute wait for somebody to come help you. In order to bring middle-income jobs back to Lane County, we need to quit chasing small businesses out of our county with crippling taxes and restrictions. We need to encourage businesses to be staying here instead of making it so difficult for them that they can't survive in our county. Even, you know, the big, the big companies, like the motor coach companies, they left because of restrictions in our county. And, you know, we can't be doing that. We need to quit chasing businesses out of our county. The crime and issues with people squatting on their property is an issue with business owners, and we need to address those. Crime is a big, big issue in our county. And, you know, it's gonna push those jobs away if their businesses are getting broken into and, and burned to the ground or damaged in some sort of way. So, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Misty. Terry, please.
Thank you. Lane County's budget, I think, if, no matter who's elected, we're gonna have an audit. I think we all can chime in on that. We need to find out where the funds are going. I guess my biggest concerns with the budget, rural police protection, mental health, I think has to be top priority in the budget process. We talk about getting, I thought it was only seven deputies or six deputies to secure rural grants. That's great. Last time I seen a deputy in Florence, he was either coming to serve papers or investigate a murder. They come over to Florence, they leave, and they go home. We need rural deputies to live in areas such as Maricola, such as Deadwood, such as Florence. We need residents deputies to take an active interest. That has to be dealt with at the Budget Committee because there's no, there's not enough money in the budget to tell a deputy that after serving two years in the Lane County Jail, now you have to move to Florence. We need to subsidize that deputy to move to Florence or Mapleton or Cheshire or Benita to find a place. They worked two years at the Lane County Jail. They don't want to, they don't want to leave Eugene Springfield. They have everything they need right there. So, as far as stimulate middle-income jobs, the biggest problem I have with stimulating just my business is housing. There's no housing available for my employees, even the local hospital here in Florence. I know I'm speaking just of Florence. I know you have the same concerns we do in Santa Clara as we do in Florence, so it's kind of hard for me to, to understand all the problems that you face without talking and advocating and speaking with you. But speaking with my experience, we need to do something about the housing situation. I think I answered everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, Ryan.
Yeah, we've had a balanced budget, not taking on any loans in the past. After the last two years, it doesn't like, doesn't look like we're gonna be able to sustain that. We currently have federal money being put into our system that is one-time money. This money is being used for ongoing expenses. I mean, you don't over-mortgage for a one-time lump sum you may have received, right? We need to think long-term, not just year to year. Using discipline to have a structurally balanced budget, ongoing expenses match incoming revenue. That's just the way budgets should work. One of those revenues could be our sustainable harvest of the ONC ground. We have the second-largest amount of timber in the ONC, second to Douglas County. Stimulate middle-income jobs. Everybody I know is looking for skilled labor right now. We need to encourage industry-working class jobs. It's honorable work. It needs to be treated as such. There are many jobs that the kids aren't encouraged to pursue because they're not a glamorous job. We need to show the next generation that are great-paying jobs with full benefits in the blue-collar trade. I'm forty-three years old and considered young in my industry. The blue-collar workers are aging out. There will be a shortage of skilled labors in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks. So, next on the docket is transportation. And the questions are, with the mixed ownership of transportation corridors in Santa Clara, do you feel that the partnerships between city, county, and ODOT are addressing our traffic concerns? What changes to current transportation infrastructure are you in support of? And how do you plan to implement those changes? And are there projects you support that would increase infrastructure and safety for alternate modes? So, how about Misty first?
I support the widening of roadways, reduced speed limits, safety barriers. I'd, I, we probably assume it was a mess between ODOT and county and city officials trying to work things out because everybody wants it done their way. Traffic's gonna be an issue. Population grows faster than development does, and we're gonna be left with roads that aren't adequate enough for the amount of people that are trying to use them. We are seeing, you know, fatal car wrecks out here on Highway 126 and West 11th lately, and I think, you know, it needs to be addressed. I think enforcing or increasing law enforcement will give us a, a way to help with the safety concerns, putting the safety barriers in place, and widening certain roadways like Highway 36, Highway 126 has gotten some widening done. Funds have been taken for these, they've been put somewhere else, and they need to be put back so that we can afford addressing the issues that are, you know, causing our traffic concerns.
Thanks, Misty. Terry.
Thank you. I've had a chance to sit on the Lane Council of, Lane Area Council on Transportation, and believe it or not, I think ODOT actually does it pretty darn good. I think it's a matter of time. There's a, there's a backlog of projects waiting to be funded. But ODOT's lead, I know in the, in our city here in Florence, we're getting all-new sidewalks and crosswalks, and, and they work well with the city of Florence. And I think in time, in Santa Clara, I've traveled through your roads in Santa Clara. Trust me, it's no fun driving a log truck through downtown. So, which I've done. It's just gonna be a matter of time, and it's just gonna have to be taken to the right committee. When your homeowners association, I've read through their, their notes, and they've got a good plan, good idea on transportation. We talk about a byway. Anytime we can divert traffic from the main roads to, through a byway, let's do it. So, I, I think the police protection, we've had an increased number of accidents on one, on every highway, not 126, but Belt Line, which is in your district, all the, all the roads. We do need to increase police protection. It's time. We just say, you know, we can send a deputy to Odell Lake for two hours to set an efficient boat, or we could use that same deputy in a traffic car or a traffic, as a traffic patrolman. So, I actually had a chance, I better not even start that subject because I'm just about out of time, but it's about all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Ryan?
Yeah, so I've talked with a lot of Santa Clara residents, and they don't feel the traffic issue has been properly addressed. Most do not want the bus route to be expanded for multiple reasons. First is more traffic. When you take away lanes, it adds to traffic. There's no way of getting around it. You cannot efficiently funnel the same amount of traffic into less lanes. Second concern I heard was its easier access in their neighborhoods for the homeless population. Santa Clara is not a place for the homeless camps, and I don't feel we need to encourage that behavior, and that was the settlement I got from multiple residents I've spoke with. I would like to do more maintenance on our infrastructure. We need to focus on maintaining what we have first, and then worry, then move on to adding lanes later. We need to expand our thoroughfares. Santa Clara is a commuter route. It just is. It's the location of it, and it's how it works. At this point, there is no other way around it. Let's look at another bridge across the Lamont. Open up the expressway. Encourage more use away from the residential areas. Before I get behind more LTD traffic, I would need to see a rate study. I work in Eugene, and I see these buses drive past all day long with one, maybe two people in them all day. How is this cost effective? I understand we need to provide transportation for those that can't afford a vehicle or choose not to, but maybe adding more buses isn't the correct solution. Thank you.
John Leslie, please.
I have lived on the northern edge of Santa Clara for over twenty-two years, and traffic has gotten measurably worse on River Road and throughout the area over that time. I have had the good fortune of owning a car, also having a strong, healthy body that allows me to bicycle, and living within walking distance of the 51 bus during this entire time, and I have actively used all these options for transportation around and into and out of Santa Clara. Over these past dozen years or so, we've seen substantial reductions in public transit service, and that began to happen well before COVID-19. When bus service was more frequent in the mid-two thousands, I could take the bus to and from work and downtown in a reasonable amount of time. But when the frequency was slashed, this became much more challenging, and I noticed a great decrease in ridership on the 51 and 52 buses. Of course, COVID-19 has made this even worse. Bicycle infrastructure has improved a bit during that time with the Hunsaker connection to the Riverbike Path System enhancements and the installation of lighting for nighttime safety, as well as the Ped Bike activated crosswalks, making things a bit easier. As I mentioned, I'm fortunate to have choices about how I get around. Meanwhile, not everyone has the luxury of owning a car. One of my family members has recently been spending two and a half to three hours on LTD each day, getting to and from home in Santa Clara to work in West Eugene. A trip that takes twenty minutes by car takes an hour and a half to two hours when your work schedule requires you to work on Sunday. With drivers and cars stuck in traffic, taking longer and longer to traverse River Road, and folks spending two hours to travel six miles using LTD, clearly, we are not meeting currently goal five of the River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan, which emphasizes an efficient, equitable, multimodal transportation system. I support increasing the frequency of public transit service along River Road and all the LTD routes, and I would like to explore other public transit infrastructure to serve the rural areas. Many Florence, Mapleton, and Deadwood residents have been asking for improved public transportation between Florence and the Valley for many years, and improvements must be made to the River Road Delta Highway connection to ease this bottleneck for automobiles.
Thank you. All right. Our next question is around public health. In the event that another variation of COVID strikes or some similar area-wide health crisis, what do you feel the role is for Lane County Public Health? Let's start with you, Terry.
Hey, thank you. Lane County should now know the basics of what not to, to what to do and not to do in an emergency public health crisis. Something I think rural communities need more of is outreach support. During the whole crisis, the only thing we got were numbers on the, on the local news, but we didn't get anything from the county telling us what the situation actually was. County offices could be focusing on the outreach to rural Lane County and provide additional resources to us. Thank you.
Thanks. Misty?
The county's job is to advise. When it comes to public health, they are not to mandate. They're an advisory. They have no authority over the people. The authority lives with the people, not the public servants that are supposed to be serving us. The real concern with public health is the drug and alcohol abuse that's rampant in our community. We need a county-wide cooperation to address this huge issue that plagues our communities. That's the real health concern, is the drug and alcohol abuse.
Thank you. John Leslie?
Thank you for the question. I have spent almost thirty years protecting human health and the environment using the excellent guidance of science to treat wastewater so our communities no longer grapple with cholera or typhoid. Lane County is our public health authority, and they've done an excellent job guided by the science and getting folks vaccinated and keeping us safe. Organs per capita COVID-19 illness and death rates were less than half that of Florida, a state that resisted the CDC's pragmatic guidance. If another variation of COVID strikes or some similar area-wide health crisis arises, I support Lane County's excellent public health staff in reviewing the relevant science and issuing guidance and support to protect our residents. Lane County's public health vaccine clinics have been efficient and well-organized, and those should continue. Lane County Public Health has also been sending vaccine ambassadors door-to-door, sharing important information about vaccinations and encouraging folks to get vaccinated and boosted. This is important to reach people where they are rather than requiring them to go and seek out information. It will be important for public health to be mindful that communities of color, the elderly, rural residents, and differently-abled communities all have unique challenges impeding their access to vaccination, and steps should be taken to reach out to these distinct communities, learn about their distinct challenges, and offer appropriate support so that they can achieve equitable health outcomes when crises arise. It will also be important for Lane County Public Health to work with local law enforcement to protect individuals using vaccine clinics and other public health clinics. We have seen a troubling and dangerous tendency of some members of our community to seize upon lies and information and take it upon themselves to threaten and intimidate vulnerable members of our community. The recent spectacle of loud ranting activists screaming threateningly at children as they entered a public school building to receive their vaccinations was alarming. This kind of violent behavior should not be tolerated, and I encourage the Lane County authorities to ensure that members of the public are protected from this type of confrontation at future clinics.
Thank you. Ryan?
I believe the county's role is to, to help prevent the spread while giving good scientific advice for prevention. If COVID does show up, we, we need to be ahead of the curve. We need to offer testing. And one of the ways they were tracing it that seemed to work very well is actually by sewer sampling. The county also provided isolation for people that didn't have any options. If you don't have extra rooms or can't afford a hotel, the, the county was actually doing that for them. And that was to help, help hold the spread, keep it from, keep it from getting worse. Contact tracing, that's in the county's job. They, we need to put in, to place an instant command structure, ICS. If there is a major outbreak, they will be there to give the, the proper guidance. I see ICS events are very organized. I have ICS training. I believe it is crucial for all our major events. Contact tracing and tracking. Contact tracing and tracking is going to be the main role of our county. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. The next question from the community is about the unhoused population. And the question, uh, Nexus reads, what role will you play in the unhoused situation in Lane County? Do you have potential solutions? If so, what is the implementation strategy, including a funding mechanism, and where are the potential locations? And what would you do to increase affordable housing? Let's start with you, Don.
Sure. Far too many people are sleeping rough on the streets and the parks under highway overpasses. It's a disgrace. Others are inadequately sheltered, threatened with loss of stable housing, stuck in dangerous situations in order to keep a roof over their head, or simply paying much too high a percentage of their income for that roof. The COVID nineteen pandemic made it much, much worse. Uh, terrible impacts on the physical and mental health of some of the most vulnerable people in our community. In Oregon, we've been severely underbuilding housing for decades. Half of the unhoused people in Lane County have jobs, but those jobs don't pay enough for an individual or a family to afford even the most basic apartment rental. I don't have a simple solution. Nobody does. We didn't get in this situation overnight, and we won't solve it overnight, but we are making progress. The city and county have been stepping up and collaborating like never before to create new solutions, repurposing old buildings to serve new functions, investing in tiny huts and small cottages, and building new apartments and homes to serve the varied needs of a wide range of people who have been left out of the conversation for too long. Business leaders at the Eugene Chamber of Commerce and other chambers of commerce have also stepped up and provided private money to support projects like Square One Villages Peace Village at the Peace Presbyterian site on River Road that will give seventy individuals and families an entry point into stable housing and a pathway to homeownership. As one of five county commissioners on the board, I would work to find more public-private partnerships and federal and state dollars to build shelters, transitional housing, and middle housing, so that folks have access to safe housing options throughout Lane County. Everyone deserves a safe place to lay their head at night. Recently, I received a fascinating briefing about the state of Oregon's efforts to cite a modular home building facility that could put dozens of people to work in good-paying union jobs that directly and effectively address the housing shortage. I'm looking forward to conversations with officials in one of the towns in my district about how I can help bring that housing manufacturing facility here to Lane County.
Thank you. Okay, how about, uh, Ryan?
Our nonprofits and government agencies are in crisis mode. I want to see outcome and budget-based programs. We need to get people proper treatment when we see them the first time. Mental health, drug addiction, and habitual offenders all need to be treated differently. This is not a one-size-fits-all problem. Is a night in jail for someone that is having a mental breakdown the best treatment? No. Let's set up our facilities to give them proper treatment, open up crisis centers for those that need and want help. Habitual offenders, on the other hand, need to be, need to do the time for the crime. There's very little long-term repercussion for these crimes, and this is just encouraging that behavior. These are some of the frustrations I heard at the Sheriff's Union meeting. I went on a ride-along and did a lot of listening. Part of the reason officers, officers are treated so poorly is the basic lack of law enforcement. With every slap on the wrist, these criminals become more and more emboldened. Uh, starts with funding and accountability. We need to fund public safety. I think we should do that by utilizing our natural resources. Back to harvesting the ONC timber at a sustainable yield, like our agreement with the Fed states. The only other option is to keep raising and adding taxes. Do we want to see permits get even more expensive at this point? Uh, thank you very much.
Thanks. Hey, Terry, take it away.
Well, I think if any one of us had an answer to this, we could probably be running for president. Uh, this is a serious discussion we need to take on at the county level. Uh, I think housing locations, sanitation, and health services need to be addressed. We start with the mental health. Need to figure out why these people are there to begin with. Uh, if you talk to anybody, sheriff's office, the, the county jail is sixty percent of their capacity is there because of mental health problems, not crime-related. They just need help, and we have no place really to put them, especially communities like the Florence area. Uh, we have someone that has a mental health problem. We don't have cahoots or white bird or whatever you have, uh, in the rural communities of Florence, Mapleton, Swissel, and Deadwood. Uh, we, we call the sheriff, we call whoever will respond. So as far as affordable housing, Florence has provided tax breaks. What they do is they offer a ten-year improvement tax-free for the developer. And this is for the multifamily units. I know it's for the developer, but we have to start somewhere. We have enough buildable lands. We just need people to step up and build them, and if we can provide the tax breaks, let's do so. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Misty, your turn.
The current homeless issue and lack of action in Lane County is inhumane, to say the least. We should be ashamed that we allow our public servants to use our money and throw it out of issue and say that they're helping it when they're really not. What we need is a complete audit of the county's finances and budget to see exactly where these funds that have already been taken for this are being put and put it to the issue that it was meant to be. All five of the commissioners need to sit down and make a clear and precise plan and take action that has visible outcomes. We need to quit. Or we need to open up our mental hospital to its full capacity and our clinics to address the issue, which is at least forty-one percent of the homeless population is mental illness and drug and alcohol abuse. And we need to address that. Our mental hospitals and our clinics need to be open to full capacity. The funds have been taken for that mental hospital. They've just been taken somewhere else, and it's been shut down, ran at a very minimum, and we need to open it up to its full capacity and start addressing the mental health and the drug and alcohol addictions. These criminals or these people that are using drugs are becoming criminals, and they get released because all they have to do is inquire about help, and that citation gets dropped, and they're off to do it again and again and again. It's a rotating uh, door of crime, and it's keeping people in the community, the homeless community, instead of actually providing actual help for them. When somebody becomes an offender, they need to be put through the system in order, you know, to help them. What we're doing is throwing money at the issue, feeding the bears, and it's, it's not helping them at all.
Thanks, Misty. All right. I'll take a one-minute public service announcement to remind you to please sign in in the chat with your first and last name, your email, and your street address, so our attendance is, uh, properly updated and allows us to, uh, advocate for funding for neighborhood associations. So, back to our program. The next question is about social justice and racial issues. And the questions are, how will you, as a county commissioner, support a constituent who's a person of color when they're targeted by a hate crime? What resources will you share with them? How will you advocate law enforcement and local government? How will you and your staff follow up in all the weeks and months after this crime? And how will you take action to make our community safe for everyone? And let's
I think that was Ryan. Is that what I heard? Okay. Uh, the first thing I would do is I would want to meet with the victim. And this is something that needs to be addressed immediately, and, and I feel face-to-face interaction is going to be the best way to do that. Uh, I would direct any help to the victim within my power. The Junction City School District has implemented an equity team, and we receive the reports of this rate, of these racist racial issues. And then we address it individually, and there are certain steps you take to make sure each one is treated with the care that it deserves. Uh, these are, these are very sensitive, hot-button issues, and each one needs to be taken very serious. We all know violence towards anybody can't be tolerated, let alone racist-driven violence. There's just no room for this in our society. Part of that face-to-face interaction would be putting my name to their face and getting to know them and following up months later, one-on-one, making sure that, that all their concerns have been addressed. If something like this happens, you're, you're not going to feel safe in your neighborhood. And that's not okay. We, we want them to know that we support them. We have their back, and this will not be tolerated. And, uh, not only just Santa Clara, but anywhere. We, we can't have this stuff. So it, it would be taken very serious and followed through for, for months and months on end to, uh, to the point where first-name basis, cell phones, we're in touch until everybody feels that, uh, we've, we, we, we've, we've done what we can to, to mitigate these problems.
Thanks, Ryan. Misty?
Hate crimes and racism are already against the law, so what we need is to start holding criminals accountable for their actions. We need to increase law enforcement. We need to increase our resources to our jails and our facilities to start holding these criminals accountable for their actions. Hate crimes are against the law already. Eugene has an ordinance specifically targeted toward hate crimes to help enforce, reinforce the state's laws and the federal laws. So the, the the laws are there. We just need to enforce it, start punishing the criminals, holding them accountable for their actions. I was in Eugene last year, had a gentleman point a gun at four of us that were walking down the road and, and use the N-word toward us, and our DA will not prosecute them because we are white, and he doesn't think he'll get a fair trial in the city of Eugene, and that's unacceptable. Hate crimes are already against the law. Let's start punishing the people that commit these crimes.
Thanks, Misty. Don Leslie, please.
Everyone deserves to feel safe and welcome in their community. Unfortunately, we've all seen hate and bigotry directed at individuals, families, and businesses owned by people of color in recent years. A year and a half ago, I founded, and until recently, I was chair of the Santa Clara Community Organization Social Justice Committee. I have been encouraged by our community's positive response to standing up against race, racism, and bias, and also saddened by the systemic racism that makes hate speech discrimination and racial violence still so common. Upstand or bystander training and the city's belonging training have taught me valuable skills in being a good ally for people of color who've been targeted. First and foremost, my role will be to approach a targeted person respectfully and with care, express my belief that violence and harassment are not okay, and ask about their experience. Ask them how they would like to be supported. I will listen carefully to them to learn about their experience and their wishes. I will share with them resources, especially the excellent resources provided by the Oregon Department of Justice's Bias Response Hotline, which has been praised by several local people of color as being helpful to them after being targeted for racial harassment and hate speech. I am concerned by long delays in responses, lack of transparency, and lack of follow-up by local law enforcement and responding to people targeted by hate speech and bias, and also lack of follow-up to the community. These terrible events impact our entire community, and we deserve to know that they are being investigated seriously, and what are the outcomes? This is a place where one of my personality traits might come in particularly handy. Years ago, in an email I was not supposed to see, one of my senior engineering colleagues described me to another colleague and recommending me for a good assignment, saying she has a jugular drive for closure on details. I took that as a compliment, and I would use that drive to follow up and follow up and follow up as necessary to help ensure that targeted individuals and our communities get the closure they need on investigations, knowing what was found, what has been done, how we can be assured that such a crime will be unlikely to be repeated.
Thank you, Don. Terry?
Yeah, I know there'll be more hate crimes whether we want it or not. I think, uh, we're just getting through a pretty tough time, uh, city of Portland. Florence, Mapleton area, we don't really have hate crime laws on the books that I know of. I'm sure there are, but, um, besides that, uh, the more I get to know about this, I don't have the exposure uh, to the hate crime. I guess that's why I'm such a sports fanatic. You're either green and yellow, or you're orange and black. There is no black and white. Uh, and I truly believe that. I can't imagine how the people of hate crimes feel, and I never will, because I come from that privileged sector. But should this ever happen, I would like to understand why it happened, how it happened, and do everything in my power to make sure that this never happens again. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Next topic is climate change. What is your opinion of Lane County's Climate Action Plan? What are the most important county issues to tackle regarding climate change, and what solutions do you offer? Misty, we'll start with you.
To combat climate change and greenhouse gases, we need to produce more crops and log our forest. Young, green, new trees. Use CO2 and expel more oxygen. The younger the trees, the more CO2 they, they consume. Our crops consume CO2. Let's produce more oxygen and less CO2 by producing crops and, and producing young trees by logging. If we were to follow the state and county plans to reduce the carbon to the levels that they want to see, all things green would die. Everything green needs carbon to survive. Every plant, every tree needs carbon. We can't eliminate carbon. We need to have more of the plants that consume the carbon to produce more oxygen.
Thanks, Misty. Terry, you're next.
Uh, Link, the Climate Action Plan, I think, doesn't really affect the common citizen as much as what everybody's leading it to, to believe. Uh, it needs some work done to it. Uh, if you want to do something for the climate, why don't we get our permit system down where we can get a permit on a one-trip basis to Eugene instead of driving four or five times over the hill just to get one building permit? Uh, that will come in time, I have a feeling. If you're going to do anything on the Climate Action Plan, why are we working to increase the methane collection by fifteen percent at Short Mountain when Oak Ridge and Florence don't have any method for, for collecting the, the organics, collecting the methane gas? Uh, what benefit is there to collect that extra fifteen percent at Short Mountain when you aren't even concerned about Oak Ridge or the coast or all areas in between? So as far as the logging, uh, I think longer rotations might be beneficial, but unfortunately, our mills are set up on a forty-year rotation. In other words, as the timber gets bigger, we can't harvest, we can't produce it, we can't run it through the mills because it's too big. So, uh, it's a renewable resource. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Uh, Ryan?
Yes, uh, I do believe we are in a warming trend. Water tables are lower than they have been, and, uh, temperature averages are up. Are we contributing to that? I would say yes, but nobody really knows how much. Should we do what we can to protect and preserve what we have? Of course. I think we need to take measures that make sense. One of those is we need a resilient infrastructure that can handle climate change. The stronger our infrastructure is, the, the better it will hold up to changing climate. Forced electrification weakens our grid. We need reliable sources for energy and heat. Natural gas is one of them. I don't think we should take away the right to choose how you heat your house. And, uh, studies show it's not going to move the, uh, carbon needle. Healthy forests, as I mentioned earlier, sequester more carbon. Healthy forests, as I mentioned earlier, sequester more carbon. We need to get our forest back to a renewable forest, to where we are on rotation and keep the keep the ONC timber money coming in. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Dawn Leslie.
Lane County has stepped up to provide leadership for climate action over the objections of the sitting commissioner. And I'm excited by the opportunity to grow community resiliency, support economic development and restore our natural environment. For too long, we've allowed a false narrative that somehow economics is pitted against the environment. That is nonsense. Our economics can only work when they're rooted in respect and nurturance of our environment and we are living the consequences of resisting this reality for far too long. We're 13 years into a statewide drought that's been hurting our economy by harming forests and farms and the families that depend on them. We're living through heat waves and wildfires with more predicted. We're only just beginning to see the ways in which these impacts will require us to work together creatively. While some elected leaders have been employing delaying tactics and spreading misinformation and stirring up animosity between people, if I am elected, I will take a different approach. I have been a climate warrior for over 30 years and in Harris Hall, I will put my expertise to work strengthening our Climate Action Plan. Remember, there is an intersection between economic development and climate action. For example, growing more of our food locally will help reduce the carbon footprint of our food production while supporting the local economy and making us more resilient. We can divert recyclables and organic material from the waste stream into a new mixed recycling facility and anaerobic digester at the Short Mountain landfill, creating jobs, recycling metals and plastics and generating renewable energy while reducing greenhouse gas emissions. People across our so-called divides, whether it's urban, rural or conservative liberal, appreciate opportunities to combine climate action with economic opportunity when we are communicating respectfully. Arguing gets us nowhere. You will recall that we argued about solar panels for so long, a technology that we developed here in the United States that we let China run away with that market and now we and the rest of the world purchase our solar panels from China. This was a failure to work together and we don't need to make this mistake again going forward. I will bring Lane County common sense, nonpartisan approaches to climate solutions.
Thank you. And our final canned question is about the River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan. And it says, how familiar are you with the River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan? And do you support the vision laid out by our neighbors for their future? And we'll start with you, Terry.
I don't know a lot about your neighborhood. Like I said, I've lived at the coast my whole life. I've looked at your your website. I've talked to some homeowners. I frequent businesses in the area and I really do enjoy that you have an association for the betterment of your community. I think other communities could take your lead. I like your newsletters, newsletter ideas. I'm here to represent, support and advocate for what you guys need in Santa Clara. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Dawn.
I'm very familiar with the Saint River Road Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan. I hosted one of the very first listening sessions in my backyard in the early years of the script process and I have provided citizen comments at numerous touch points throughout the plan's development. I am deeply impressed with the dedication of Saco and Arco's leadership teams and members devoting literally thousands of hours of volunteer time to create a vision that can guide city planners in developing land use, economic development, transportation, parks and recreation and community outcomes that match our shared values. If I am fortunate enough to be elected county commissioner, I look forward to encouraging the rest of the county board to adopt this neighborhood plan so it can guide city and county decision making. As Saco members recall, I have been a vocal advocate of increasing Saco membership. One of the key reasons is to increase neighborhood participation in all things Saco, including the neighborhood plan. It's a living document going forward and it will be exciting to watch it grow and bloom in our community as our membership does. Are there going to be time for closing comments or is this the last piece? Will there be a closing, a round of closing comments?
I think we're going to have some time and so we can do a round of closing comments and we can also probably take two or three uncanned questions. So we'll do that at the end.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, let's see. Next is Ryan.
Yes, I do support the Santa Clara Neighborhood Plan. This is a plan with lots of public input and with compromises that make sense. We don't need to ban vehicles or take away bike lanes or add too many buses. We all need to fit on the same roads. Cars don't work for everyone and neither do buses. I I like the plans that have been laid out for bike paths that go to all the different places and hitting the high spots. I believe people are moving more to pedal power, especially with some of the new electric stuff that's came along. I think it's going to become more commuter friendly if you stay local. But Eugene needs to decide what they want to do. And I I would love as much input as I can get on this coming from E-Web. Even just when we talk water, River Road Water Districts and some of these other smaller districts need the larger water districts' help. And at certain point, is it going to make sense for Eugene to incorporate Santa Clara or not? These are all great discussions and it was fun reading the back and forths on it. Thank you.
Okay, Misty, please.
I'm not too familiar with the plan, but what I've seen, I appreciate because the Arco members and community have put great effort into developing this plan. The draft phase included substantial input from the community and the outreach to the community shows that the cooperation between community, government and private organizations work. That is what is needed, a cohesive management operation to better a community. And that's what is needed. From what I've seen of the bike path routes and stuff like that, that's a that's a plus. It's needed. Better ways around. The community is always a plus.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an opportunity now to have a few unscripted questions. So if you have a question and you'd like to raise your hand, I could field a few questions and then we'll go to closing comments from our candidates. Okay, well, I'm not seeing any raised hands. Okay, then I think we've probably gotten, oh, there we go. Louis Vidmar and then Roz Sauce, please.
I'm wondering what, if any, experience you have with collective bargaining and organized labor.
Was that for everyone, Louis, or for someone in particular?
Yeah, hopefully a quick answer from each.
So take it away, Terry.
Yeah, my my own experience with collective bargaining would come from the Port of Sayis Law, the 10 years I've spent there. And honestly, it's not extensive. So I would say I'm familiar with it. I know the processes of collective bargaining. It's not my forte. It's not my strong point.
Thanks, Terry. Dawn Leslie.
Thank you for the question, Louis. It's not, it's a my personal, I've never been a member of a union or had to participate directly in collective bargaining, but I am a tremendous supporter of labor and and the benefits and value of to the community of having a strong, strong policies that protect worker rights and protect family wage jobs and and strong benefits packages for for communities. I was very, very saddened to see, to see the tendency of the board to privatize county jobs. And I think that goes in in opposite direction of where we need to go. Family wage jobs help the whole community and unions fight for that every day and so I'm a great supporter, which is why I am endorsed by many local unions. In fact, many, many local unions from SEIU to ASME to the Building Trades Council and multiple building trades, including IBW and carpenters and painters. And I'm learning about the union bargaining process and looking forward to supporting unions if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to this position.
Thanks, Dawn. Ryan Senega.
Yes, I've been a union member for years. I started back with Junction City Public Works when we were ASME. I've been at the bargaining table. So I know, I understand the how the bargaining works and what everybody's fighting for at the table. It is a tough position when you are, in a sense, bargain bargaining with your with your boss. When I went to IBW, I'm I'm not on the bargaining committee there, but I am part of the school board where now I'm on the other side of the bargaining table. And it puts you in a good position when you understand both sides, when everybody wants, you want to give somebody, you want to give them the farm, you want to give them everything you can, but you only, your budget's only so much. The skilled labor, you're a skilled labor, you're worth something. So then you're bargaining for everything you can get. And it's it's good when the, well, you know, it was a good bargaining time when both sides leave unhappy. So yeah, I've been in the bargaining unit. I understand it and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. And when you reach an agreement, you want to make sure that agreement is honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Misty, please.
My family have been lifelong members of unions. We support unions. The bargaining part of it is a necessity. Unions are a necessity. Otherwise, companies will walk over good employees and and it kind of try supposed to kind of balance it out between, you know, employees and and the employer, but it's kind of gone sideways a little bit. The bargaining part of it isn't as beneficial to the employees as it should be. And there's some greediness within the unions that needs to be squared up, just like any other business out there. But in the most part, the collective bargaining is a good tool for employees and we need it.
Thanks, Misty. All right, Roz Sauce, your question, please.
Yeah, um, I guess as a public school teacher who's a member of union, I'm really startled and concerned about how many young people have a complete lack of knowledge and lack of caring about our local government. And so I'm curious about how each of you would work to to help engage young people and educate them about what it what it is you do and what the power of the individual is in our in our communities. And my cat baby has a question, but that'll come later.
All right, take it away, Misty.
I am a big advocate for getting our young people involved in every aspect of our lives, like our government, our politics, everything. When I was in Columbia County, I was the youngest PCP up there at 38 years old and I find that unacceptable. We need our young people involved. They're our future. And there's a huge misconception thrown their way about how things work. Especially, I hear a lot of young people that are against unions and it's mind blowing to me. That's a secure job. Unions are supposed to fight for you. And so I'm a huge advocate for getting young people involved in in our businesses, how they function, how our government functions, every aspect of our life. They are going to be our future leaders and and they need to, you know, be able to take the reins, not left to the wind.
Thanks, Misty. Go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, I think I think the young, younger population, it's all about educate, help them understand it's teaching. It's a simple matter of teaching. If we can get them hands on experience, I I don't want to say this, but I think they have a better understanding with the internet availability that they have now and what we kind of give them credit for. But we need to bring that out in them. So that's about all I have to say.
Thanks, Terry. Ryan.
Yes. Well, I I agree. It is startling and I have a 15 and a 13 year old daughter. And I see it, I see it with them and I see it amongst their friends. When, I mean, they were three and four years old, they knew they knew the Pledge of Allegiance. We've done what we can to 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 teach them to know to know our history. I was actually just listening to a radio show yesterday and they were talking about this topic. And it's it it starts with a lack, a lack of history, not not knowing what we've gone through to get where we're at. And not, I don't believe they really do understand government's role and where we are supposed to be. I was in the Lions Club. I joined the Lions Club. My grandpa was in the Lions Club and I was the youngest member of the Lions Club for years. And I've aged out and lost that title, but we started the Leos program there, which was great, getting the getting our little most, it was mostly grandchildren, but getting grandchildren involved and showing them how meaningful all these things are, help helping your fellow citizen and be when you were in a position to show them and lead by example. I I think I think we need more of that, leading by example. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Dawn Leslie, please.
I agree with the concern of my fellow candidates about this topic. There it is not acceptable to me, the way there is a disconnect between the next generation and the government agencies that I would say make the trains run on time, but we don't really have trains here locally. But you know, the the government agencies that make things work, it's it's a sad disconnect. And my son is 18 and he knows more than your average bear about it. But really, I mean, I go door to door at thousands of doors across this district and there's actually a lack of knowledge at all ages of what the different, the role of government is and what government does. I'll tell you a little story about what I've done to reach out to young people in my district. And and it's related to campaigning because it was, it's a place I could do it. I'm interested, I'm curious about and concerned about water quality and water quantity issues around the district. So I reached and I intend to have a relationship with all of the seven high schools in this district. That hasn't historically been a role of county commissioners, but it's a commitment that I have to have a relationship with each of the seven high schools in this district. So I reached out to a local high school to their to their STEM program and asked for a student to help me analyze the the rainfall on largest, some of the largest buildings in the district. When I was preparing to talk to people about the Mapleton water issues, I can tell you with confidence that 4 million gallons a year of water falls on the Mapleton High School and the Mapleton Middle School. And the reason I know that is because a freshman at one of the high schools in this district measured those buildings for me and we worked together so she could learn how to do it, how to make a, how to make a, how to make a spreadsheet, how to check rainfall records. And now I can tell you 4 million gallons a year falls on those two buildings because she helped me do that work. And I felt it was a way to show her what her science training is for and also what government does and how we think about water and and just kind of connect science and her curriculum to what I'm doing in my in my work. There's a little story.
Thanks. Any other questions, folks? Sha.
So my question is for the candidate is regarding the culture, culture competence of like the value, value of a diversity and the inclusion. I'm wondering the candidates, how much of the knowledge or the education have you done about, for example, black history in Oregon and LGBTQ community, the resource and this education? And how much have you done that? And if you don't have much, and how do you gather resource and the connection with this marginalized population? Thank you.
Thanks, Shaw. Why don't we go ahead and start with you, Ryan?
Yeah. I've learned a lot being on the school board. These are, these are, these are real issues that, that need to be addressed. It's, it's a little disheartening, very, very disheartening when you get these reports and you hear about what people are, what people are saying about other people based on, based on skin colors, based on sexual orientation. And I, from kids all the way to adults, it just seems like people are getting more calloused. They're not, they're not taking into consideration what other people, what a small conversation with someone or what a derogatory slur, what it does to them when they go home. It's not something you, you say it and you walk away. It's something that sticks with them. And I, we've had students come in and, and, and talk and testify about things that have been said. And these are serious issues. I, I've been a coach in, in soccer and basketball and worked with all the, the, the different kids. And I go and I, I see a soccer team and I, I love every one of those kids the exact same. And I, and when I go to the school to, to talk with them, I love when they come up and call me coach. And, and that's the kind of stuff that, that you want to, to teach the kids and, and to teach and for that to go on to the adults, the, the parents I see, they come up and we say hi everywhere we're at and, and mingle. And it's, I haven't gone out and got educated. I've gone out and got real world views of, of, of how this, of how this is working. And there, there is work to do. I, I agree on these, on this culture and diversity. Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Terry, please.
My biggest education comes from the Marine Corps. I served in the military and it didn't matter if you're black, white, green, what orientation, everybody there was olive, drab, green. You relied on everybody. And, and the military can teach a lot of things, I think, to the, to the everyday society. I think that's one of the true reasons I've talked about this before, that I am such a passionate sports fan. You're either green and yellow or orange and black in this room. So I can learn a lot more about the cultural diversity. I have a lack of exposure other than the Marine Corps and my sports teams. But it doesn't mean I can't learn about it. Doesn't mean I can't represent your needs. I think the, the more I know, the better I can be for me and your community. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Don Leslie, please.
Thanks for that question, Shaw. It, it is a concern of mine. And I grew, I grew up in a really very white community and I live right now in a very, not very diverse community, if you will, but in the middle, I spent some time in Chicago and lived in a very racially diverse neighborhood. And I think that was probably the beginning of my direct exposure to more cultural diversity. But exposure is one thing, actually, learning and, and hearing those cultural perspectives for me has come down to trainings and reading. So I've taken the up standard bystander training that the, that social standing up for racial justice has offered. I've taken the city's belongings training, which has a, you know, a section on cultural competence and helps me learn and, and develop better skills that, you know, I, eye opening stories about ways that trying to be an ally, you can make things worse. That was you know, surprising to me. So it's, it's been, and then reading books, Isabel Wilkerson's books and other stamped, many, many books written by people of color and also by white people about, about understanding the challenges for people of color and also LGBTQ communities. It's, I can't say that, I, I always have more to learn. I can't say that I'm, you know, I'm now culturally competent. It is a process of learning and growing and listening and always being looking for the next resource and the next course. I found a resource out of Seattle, very useful, a set of classes through the, the Freedom Project, which is a project that helps try to, to stop the, the school to prison pipeline that, that exists for people of color. Their trainings were super useful to me, but it's just a work in progress. I'm learning and trying to learn more all the time.
Thanks, Don. Misty, please.
Oh, I was kind of hoping this question wouldn't come up, but it's there. I grew up in Junction City and Triangle Lake. Triangle Lake was a very difficult place to be if you were part of a different group that wasn't up to their standards. Junction City, we were a mix of everybody and it was great. We didn't, you know, didn't experience the names and, and the stuff that was going on. If you were a person of color or something like that, what we did experience was a lot of homophobic tension. And hopefully Junction City and other school districts have in place means of dealing with that. I know what I experienced in school and I know even in this candidate race, knocking on doors, I was called, I knocked on a door and introduced myself and they said, oh, you're that homophobic bitch. So I'm going to set the record straight. I'm not homophobic. I'm in fact gay. I'm married to a lady named Lisa Fox. So we can throw that out the window right now. My family is a mix of Native American, Hispanic and black. I've got a lot of black little cousins and I love every one of them. So I am part of this community. I'm not an outsider. I know what I've experienced and I know what they're experiencing. And we need to pick up ourselves and better ourselves as a whole. Even somebody within the community, we are, we are nowhere as educated as the people who are actually suffering these names and these actions toward them. So we need to fix our issues.
Thanks, Misty. So maybe now's a really good time for us to go to closing statements from the candidates. If you'd like to use your two minutes to do that, you're welcome to do that. And then we'll wind, wind it up. So why don't we go ahead and start with you, Terry?
Thank you. I want to start by saying, I recently had a conversation with a retired captain of the Lane County sheriffs here this last week. I asked him the question, what's it going to take for us to get a resident deputy, say, in the Florence Mapleton area? He looked at me and his one word answer was representation. I'm here, I want to represent you. It's my, I, I want it to be my job to hear your voice and be your advocate. Help the county provide support to our West Lane County communities. Our concerns are different than the bigger parts of this county. We deserve better. And I'm here, I want to represent you. I want to be your voice. The county should be a leader in services like mental health services, housing and homelessness, supporting appropriate land use and enough police presence in the smaller communities. It's hard to recruit employees, let alone keep them for any period of time. It was an easy choice for me to decide to represent West Lane County. I'm tired of, of spending all my tax money and not getting, getting anything in return. For that reason, I'm going to ask for your vote for the seat of West Lane County. And thank you.
Terry, go ahead, Don Leslie.
Thank you to the Santa Clara Community Organization for the great work you do for our neighborhood and for arranging this forum and for inviting me to present here. Thank you to all the community members who attended this evening. I hope that you enjoyed our conversation as much as I did. We covered a lot of ground in only two hours. If you didn't get your questions answered tonight, you can reach me through my website, donleslie.org. I am accessible to your questions. I want to hear your opinions and that is how I will serve if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to serve as your West Lane County Commissioner. I am Don Leslie. I'm your neighbor and I'm asking for your vote.
Thanks, Don. Go ahead, Misty.
I am Misty Fox. I'm running to be West Lane County Commissioner. I am one of you. I grew up in this community. This is my hometown. This is where I plan to stay for the rest of my life. I believe that it takes one of us to change things. I'm not a politician. I'm not endorsed by a politician or a corporation. I'm not bought and paid for. I do not believe these races are won with who has the most money, who has the biggest signs. It's won by getting out and knocking on doors. And that's what I've been doing. I've been going out and hearing your concerns because as a representative, we are there to be your voice. And I would like to be your voice in Lane County. We need to boost our law enforcement and bring our rural county, parts of our rural county able to access help when needed. And when we bring up the numbers of our law enforcement, we also have to bring up the education of them. I have been on the other end of the stick. I've been abused by police officers. I've been falsely arrested. And I've had to fight it through the system and I've won thankfully, but others haven't. And so we need the education along with the enforcement of our local law enforcement agencies. We need local law enforcement agencies. It's 29 minutes out here on the side of the highway. I had to standoff with some kidnappers a couple summers ago that kidnapped some people and I rescued them. And I stood out on the side of the highway alone with, you know, this victim and these kidnappers and law enforcement arrived. It takes like 30, 40 minutes for them to get there and that's unacceptable. People's lives are on the line. And so we need to build the relationship with our officers and our county people need to step up and, and, you know, help us all out. Thank you.
Thanks, Misty. And the last word is yours, Ryan.
Well, thank you. And thanks for putting this forum on. It, it's been fun and we have covered a lot of ground tonight. And I'm sure there's a lot of, you can tell I'm, I'm not a career polished politician by any means. I've always been a blue collar worker. I am rural Lane County. And I want to represent rural Lane County. And I've, I've become very passionate about it along this journey. I have talked with a lot of people, a lot of phone calls, getting a lot of phone calls. And I feel communication is huge. I have answered my phone every time it's called since this has started. And sometimes, sometimes that's a lot between this and the school board and everything else we're doing. And it's been, it's been a great journey. This, this is, is really showed, the excitement behind my race is, is really showed that, that people do want someone in representing them that is one of them. Someone that is clean install, someone that is drove tractors, someone that works in Eugene. And, and, and I'm willing to be that person. I've been to every part of this West Lane since I've started, had meet and greets. And it has been absolutely great. We have had a lot of people show up. And when you go, when you have people show up and encourage you, it, it makes you, makes you realize you are doing the right thing. So I would thank you guys. Ryan Senega, C E N I G A dot com is where my website is. And look me up, give me a call and I ask for your vote. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, all candidates. I just give everybody one last reminder, a plug for the Aubrey Park Wildflower Festival on the 30th of April from 11 to 2. And I wish you all a good night and thanks for participating. And eventually this will be posted on our Saco website. So if anybody you know missed it and wants to hear from the candidates this way, they can always find it there.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Joan, can you hear me? Can you hear me? I care very deeply for our environment. I, I do not believe in all the herbicides and pesticides should be used in our forest and in our neighborhoods. I am a very active outdoors person and what they're doing to our environment is, is, it's going to destroy us all. I, I live out here where they're trying to destroy Horton Mill Pond. And I tell you what, I'm a little more radical than others. I'll put my body in front of those machines before that pond comes out. We have endangered pond turtles in there that they're trying to deny that's there. And we, us locals have pictures of them. We're going to be working like mad here in the next couple of months, trying to gather up those babies and prove to Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and Forestry that those animals do exist there and that this is a complete ecosystem that has lasted for a long time. It used to be a mill pond. Well, back, back in the day, it used to be a creek and then they dammed it up and made a mill pond before I was even born. And I'm 44 years old. And now they want to destroy that. And it's like, this is an ecosystem that's, that's been flourishing and, and thriving my entire life. Why are we going to destroy it? I feel there's an underlying issue that they're not telling the public because it is a means for fire control. If we have a fire out here, that's, that's a resource for water. And it's nature. I mean, every, you should see the amount of people that, have you been to Horton Mill Pond ever? Molt Reservoir? I invite you to come out. It is a beautiful place. And the people just come out and just love the, the beauty and the, and the serenity of it, like just sitting in a kayak in the middle of this little pond. It, it's like, I don't know. You know, I don't know if you are a religious person or spiritual, but it, it's like connecting to the heavens sitting in that area. And so I, I'm, I'm very concerned about our environment. Like I am absolutely against herbicide spraying. Monsanto GMOs, all that crap. It's, it's poisoning us and it's going to kill our earth.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So I don't understand why you're in, talk about clear cutting and growing new things instead of letting there be
Because
you know, it's like, I don't
There's a misconception when it comes to clear cutting. It's, it's not destroying the environment. Trees get to a certain age and there's nothing that grows underneath them. When you cut, growth grows underneath where animals flourish. You go to a, an old growth forest, there's no ground cover. When there's no ground cover, that's browse for animals, you know, homes to animals or, you know, that need to be there. And when that doesn't happen, you know, those trees are just there. It's just a tree. When we cut it, when we, when we cut it, we get the new growth there. And, and there's a, an environment that supports lots of different animals and not just very little. Like when you walk through a large, large forest, large forest, and there's no undergrowth there, you'll see that there's not deer and rabbits and chipmunks in there. When you clear cut it and you get a 50, 60 year old tree in there, When you clearcut it and you get a fifty, sixty-year-old tree in there, there's undergrowth where the deer are browsing. And, you know, berries and stuff grow for the beer, uh, bears come into. What I don't agree with when it comes to clearcutting is instead of taking out, you know, the brush piles by burning, they've started dumping herbicide on it. Warehouse alone dumped a hundred million pounds of herbicide. And they say, oh, it's gone after the first wash. No, studies have shown that that is still in the soil sample and in root samples up to nine years later. And, and that herbicide has proven to be, uh, reproductive disruptors, causes all kinds of cancers and everything, and that doesn't just happen in humans, it happens in our animals too. Everybody wants to blame predators, you know, for the destruct, and poachers for the destruction of our deer and elk populations. But those are reproductive disruptors for those animals also. When they eat that browse that has those chemicals in it, it causes them to have abortions, it causes them to be sterile, just like it does us. And so clearcutting's good, but it needs to be done in a way that's beneficial to all, not just wiping out the trees and, and planting some others.
Right, I, yeah.
And not close to streams where it causes the soil runoff into it and destroys our salmon spawning habitat and stuff like that.
We could go.
It's a, it's a very.
Glad you spoke to me about this. I, I grew up in, um, northern New York where there's still, only place where there's still some old growth.
Yeah, I believe in protecting our old growth forests. Our Elliott National Forest is a, a big topic here in Oregon, and it's sensitive with a lot of us. Um, we need our old growth as, as, you know, sanctuary for us. We have enough lands that can be logged in this and that, and, you know, it's, you know, I, I'm not, I don't fit a certain mold, like, you know, yes, I'm registered as a Republican, but do I believe every values they have? No, I, you know, I'm, everybody asks me, how can you be a Republican and gay? Well, you know, it's, it's who I am, it's just, you know, there's just, I'm not gonna fit a mold that everybody has, and environment is a very, you know, I'm a tree hugger, I, I take pictures of trees as much as I take pictures of my puppy. Like, I, I absolutely love trees, I love nature, I love fresh, clean water. My, well, my water source here is a spring, and, you know, we used to be able to drink right out of the creeks. So now you don't know what kinda poisons are in them.
Right.
And so.
Well, I'm really glad to meet you in real life, and I, I think.
I, I am more than willing to come shake your hand anytime. I'll, you know, I give everybody my phone number, I tell them I'm very easy to reach, and I will bring you out here to Horton Mill Pond if you wanna come visit it, it's a magnificent place to be.